We're at six thirty, so we're gonna open the meeting, six thirty for the clock up there. So, you know, we haven't had too many meetings without, with people and not on Zoom, so pardon our awkwardness. But, you know, just wanna start off with this, this meeting is being recorded, so please know that. You don't see it on the screen here, but these cameras up here will be sort of rotating around as the meeting goes along, so please, please be aware of that. And then, as always, we are gonna start with, with open session. So, before we get to our agenda items, is anybody here for open session? Okay?
Actually, yes.
Bella.
I submitted you a letter.
Yep.
I would like you to respond to that. I am asking for reinstatement. You need me. Hubbardston needs me. Did you see the ballot? How many blank slots there were on that? People don't wanna step up. I have always been willing to step up. I have always served honestly. You need me. So I ask for reinstatement or some other compromise.
So, we did get your letter, read your letter, and understand what you are asking for. So, the, the point of the letter, if I could summarize for people, is that we have a new board now, and that you'd basically like us to reconsider a decision that was made by the previous board.
Yes.
Okay. We are gonna make that an agenda item for our next meeting. We're not gonna do it in open session here because of preparation time, so we wanna make sure that that is listed as an agenda item.
If it will be on the next meeting agenda, I'll be here and I won't probably further about it.
No, trouble us all you want, but I'm just letting you know, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put it on as an agenda item, so that anyone who's reviewing it also has the opportunity to see it as an agenda item, and then can sort of come back then, okay?
No one ever asked me for a copy of this document, so I'm needing you a copy of this document. You can all see that the charges against me were found to be without merit.
Okay.
And thank you very much for your time. I hope the meeting proceeds very well.
Okay. All right, Bella, thank you.
I am, first of all, loyal to Hubbardston, and I thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else here for open session? Okay, seeing none, then we are going to get on with our meeting, and we're gonna move it around a little bit for present company and to make sure that we are, you know, taking care of things that should be taken care of first, and, and so we're gonna move up our annual Country Hen Scholarship Awards to, to right now in the meeting, and we've got some representatives of the Country Hen here, and, you know, I know you've done this before, and...
Couple times.
Couple times, and sort of give you the floor here, Bob, and if you could just introduce yourself and anyone else from the Country Hen who is here, and then proceed on as you see fit.
So, my name is Bob Borghardt, I'm the general manager of the Country Hen Farm, and I have my administrative assistant, Lynn Strazas, with me, and we're here to present some scholarships to some deserving students. So, I guess we'll start with Juliana. And I'll just read off a little something here, kind of a little funny thing that we put together. So, "An egg symbolizes the future, good luck and prosperity. Our hope is that the Country Hen Scholarship helps us start Juliana on her journey towards this. Juliana, we see great promise in your success, as indicated by your strong commitment to helping youth in the community during your high school career, as well as your ability to rise above the adversity of the difficulties of the 2019, 2020, 2020 and 21 school years to achieve such academic success. We're honored to be a very small part in your first steps to the future, and look forward to hearing about your journey towards your career in psychology. We admire your goal of helping to better the world around you. That's definitely something that's needed right now." So, congratulations.
All right, if you could hold your certificate up, so they can see that, too? Yes?
No, I will just crop you out.
I don't wanna photo bomb those here.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations. Very good.
Next is Catherine.
"An egg symbolizes the future, good luck and prosperity. Our hope is that the Country Hen Scholarship helps us start Catherine on her journey towards this. Catherine, we see great promise in your success, as indicated by your strong commitment to athletics and community service during your high school career, as well as your ability to rise above the adversity of the difficulties of the 2019, 2020, 2021 school years and achieve academic success. We've honored, we're honored to be a very small part of your first steps to the future, and look forward to hearing about your journey towards your career as a psychiatric nurse practitioner. Impressive. We also greatly admire your goal of following in your grandparents' footsteps to help the community." So, congratulations, Catherine.
So, Bob, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we, we don't forget about you guys, because this, this comes from unbelievably generous, you know, previous gifts, and for many years to come, the Country Hen is, is just an absolute jewel of our community, and for you to be able to help out a couple of daughters of our community like this on an annual basis on a very competitive field, one which we had a couple, two select board members, one representative of the Country Hen, and two school committee members who, who labored over the decisions, and that, that's only a credit to the community as well, but we wanna thank you again for your contributions to, to Hubbardston.
Well, we're happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Can I move it go downhill from here? Good night. Annually, following annual town meeting and elections, we, our first meeting, the, the early item agenda is to do a board reorganization. So, what that means to anyone who doesn't know is, the select board, the five-member select board in Hubbardston, anyway, has, has typically had a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk that make up the, the, the group, and so, you know, here we are. So, I'll sort of lead off with, we only have four of our five members here tonight. Jeff Williams, who can't be here tonight, did send an email, I just wanna make sure everybody sort of saw that. If you didn't, you can let me know, and I can sort of read it out loud, but, anyway, board-wise, but, so that's where we're at. So, you know, it's one of those sort of discussions of, of, you know, sort of where to go from here. So, you know, I've been chair for a number of years in a row, and I guess the way I've worded it is, I'm, I'm happy to continue as that, but I don't need to continue as that. Jeff has expressed his desire to remain vice chair. That's up to us tonight to decide, and then, then is the clerk as well. So, the way this process works is, is, you know, somebody would make a motion for somebody to, or just, you know, then we get to discussion and all that, but I guess, you know, I'll sort of leave the floor to all of us to, to talk about it. So, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think he should remain chair, and Jeff should remain vice chair.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. If that's the case, I guess we go one at a time, and, and somebody would make a motion, you know, in order of whichever they'd like to do it, and then we can get to discussion once we start talking about it, so.
All right, so we gotta do them individually?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that you remain chair. Dan Blon.
Second.
Okay, it's a second, now we're in discussion. Anyone have anything to talk about here? Okay, seeing none. We will vote, and we do not have to roll call anymore, I just wanna make sure of that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, none, and it's unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Jeff for vice chair.
Second.
Okay, seconded, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, yes, so that's unanimous, and I would like to nominate Katie for clerk.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
I, whatever.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right.
Just put mayor right here. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good, you'll get there. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, okay.
I guess I vote for myself.
All right, yes you can, and it's unanimous. All right, that's the reorganization.
Very good.
You know.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, our next item, we are at a poll hearing, so, do we have representatives here?
Yeah.
That's you? Hello? You can stare at there, I suppose, right? You're close enough?
Right.
Okay, sounds good. So, I'm gonna read, I don't know, David, how much, there's not that much to read, so I'm just gonna read the entire thing here.
That would be...
Yeah, I'll read the entire thing, and then we can, we can sort of go from there with any questions we have for you. Okay, why don't you move up to the front seat here, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
All right, so, we are National Grid poll hearing, from Morgan Road, National Grid to install one SO poll, which I assume means standalone?
Solely owned.
Okay, I like mine better, but, okay. Solely owned poll on Morgan Road, beginning at a point approximately 292 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Morgan Road and Underwood Road, and continuing approximately 12 feet in a west direction. Install P-22-84 in public way for anchoring of P-22. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for, for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as may be, as may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with, marked Morgan Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, number 303-50140, May 21st, 2021. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections, with such poles and buildings as each of the petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire police telephone and telegraph signal wires belonging to municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. So, I guess the first question is, just, you know, for all of us here and, and watching, so what's this poll for?
So, a homeowner recently bought a plot of land on Morgan Road, and our power line goes over it, and they're trying to build a house there. So, we're relocating the power line for them, and to do that, we need to get a pole in the public way to anchor the new primary line that's gonna be going over the adjacent property, because that power line that was there on that customer's property was servicing the adjacent neighbors, 'cause nobody was living on that property before, and the adjacent neighbor owned it.
Just went right across?
Yeah, so they bought it from them, and now they need it gone, so.
Okay. So, pretty customary. Yeah, okay. Anyone have any questions, further questions? No? Okay.
Who's putting in the poll?
We, National Grid.
At your own expense?
Yes. Actually, no. There's, they're old polls, so there was no easement for the property, so all the work is done under the system.
Okay.
I asked police fire and TPW to take a look and see if they had any objections, and they don't.
Okay. All right. It's pretty straightforward here, so I, I guess we'll, somebody make a motion to accept this?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the poll petition as read.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay, it's unanimous. All right, so you need something signed, or I see something in front of me here. David? Or are we, is this just information?
Yeah, I think that's just information.
Okay, sounds good. So, you're good?
Yeah.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next item is, item Roman numeral three, which is community outreach, which is in regards to the Royal Sun Farm LLC. David, how much of this should I, should I read, do you think? Just, just, this will do it, whatever's on here, to sort of open it up?
That's it.
Okay. So, this is, this is a community outreach meeting, Royal Sun Farm LLC, for 69 Gardner Road. Royal Sun Farm LLC is hosting a community outreach meeting jointly with the planning board and select board. The planning board has yet to officially open a meeting here, I think, right?
We have our first meeting, uh...
No, I mean, tonight.
Oh, yes, and as a matter of fact, lamentably, I don't...
You don't have a quorum?
You don't have a quorum.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you would like to pursue trying to get in touch with other members on the board?
Yeah.
And hold up, starting the community outreach until such time that we can secure one additional person.
Okay, has there been any, before we go there, has there been any, I know I already asked you about Alice, but was there any other communications that went along around you guys that...
There was an email that was sent out earlier in the day today that I received, I don't know who else may have read it.
Yeah.
I do know that this was briefly discussed also during our meeting last Thursday.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I can step outside.
Yeah, please do.
And I can try to make a few phone calls.
Yeah, sounds good, if you do that. So, Damon, if you could hold on for a few minutes? Sounds good. All right, and we're gonna move on while we can. Open session's next, but I did that first, so we're done with that, and then our next item will be something that we brought in since David arrived, I think it's a streamlining process, and, and it's basically called general consent. Since we are sort of new to it, and we've got some new board member, and we've got people for the first time alone, David, could you just explain general consent briefly?
Right, so, the select board deals with a lot of important matters that affect the quality of life in the town, and in order to give you the opportunity to focus in on these important questions, I like to put items which are routine, don't require a lot of debate, have no controversy associated with it, I like to put those into one motion, rather than making eight or nine different motions, one motion to accept everything on the consent agenda. If you've looked at the consent agenda, and if there's something there that you don't think is routine, you can ask for it to be taken out of the consent agenda, pass the remainder of the consent agenda, and then we can debate the item that has been removed.
Sounds good, that's a good summary. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the general consent agenda. Again, this is a little bit new for us, we've done it a bit the last few weeks, but overall it is new, so if anyone has any questions, please, please let us know. So, okay, so, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the, the items on the left side of the sheet that we have, which are basically the topics that are in the consent agenda, and if anyone here at the table, select board-wise, if anyone out there has any questions, please raise your hand, and I'll, and I'll call on you when, when, when it makes sense to call on you, and I always will, you know, just, just sort of let me know. But the first would be meeting minutes.
Hold.
Sounds good. The next would be notice of vacancy of the following boards and committees, Board of Health, Planning Board, Housing Authority, which has four vacancies, the la, the latter. Any person interested should send a letter to the, the Select Board, Town of Hubbardston, requests are due July 1st, so that's another item. The next item would be notice of two vacancies on Quavon School Committee. Any interested person should send a letter to Select Board, Town of Hubbardston, due July 1st again. These are sort of troubling vacancies that we go through often. Not often do we go through the school committee one, gotta say, in my time here, anyway, so that is unfortunate. Hopefully, we've, we've made some contacts with the existing school committee members and, and have some interested parties. The next item is appointment of open space committee and Ware River, Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee.
Hold.
Yeah, sounds good. The next is fiscal year 2022 salary schedule, and just, not that I'm reading the descriptions for all of these, but salaries are usually a hot-button item in town, so I'll just give a little bit more info. This is just to approve the salaries that were appropriated by annual town meeting recently. So, it's not coming up with them tonight, or, or trying to put some in there that nobody's seen, these are the ones that have previously been reviewed by the town and approved. The next item is boards and committees' annual appointments by the select board, so there's a list of these annually. We dole out responsibility as a select board to the different boards and committees in town to be a liaison, so that in the event that there needs to be coordination, or cooperation, or whatever, between the select board and some other board or committee, there is a representative for that, and we don't have to sort of reinvent the wheel each time. So, that's what that's for. Habitat for Humanity Property Transfer, another annual town meeting item that, that is for, for formalization tonight, and then a, a ward of a contract for the fire station lease.
Hold.
And, and we're gonna hold on that, too. So, okay, so David, do you think the best way to do this, again, this is kind of new to me, do, do we go through a review of each of the ones that have a hold on them first, do you think, or do we, or do we go to consent on all the ones that didn't have a hold?
You can go to consent on all the non-held items.
Okay, sounds good. So, we'll do that, if anyone has any questions on, on which items those are, please let me know, but there were three that have a hold on them, the minutes, the appointment of open space committee, and Ware River Watershed, and the fire station lease.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all of the remaining items on the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, and now we will go to items that have a hold on them, we'll start at the top with minutes.
Excellent. So, on this one, the two, two of the minutes were not included, the April 26th and the May 24th, were not included in the packet. I don't know if we have any copies of those, David?
I did have a copy of those. So, the 24th and the what?
May 24th and April 26th did not appear to be in the Google Drive.
They're probably in the previous, 'cause they, we didn't approve them last go, 'cause I had to skip over them, 'cause of, something was running late, I remember, they were all there, and we moved forward.
There was a third document that was in the Google Drive, but it was dated as May 10th. Is that possible, that was supposed to be May 24th?
Uh, no, it wasn't May 24th.
I'm looking at the May 24th. No, I'm not. Well, no, that is a little confusing, so because it is confusing, we should probably push those two off, so which two again were those?
It was April 26th and May 24th.
April 26th and May 24th. And I suppose I'd be remiss if I, I, I'm sorry I didn't do this, but we, we have a new board member.
I know, seriously.
Yeah, sorry.
Whatever, I, I'm, you're in charge.
Okay. So, anyway, we, we welcome you to the board, congratulations, and, you know, hopefully you'll stick around for, for a number of years here, because we have a great little town. So, okay, so, we polled April 26th and May 24th, I think, because we have a little confusion on that, but, um, May 20th and June 1st, I guess are still on the table for us to act on tonight.
All right. Which ones, May 20th and June 1st?
And June 1st.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve May 20th and June 1st minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, do we, anyone have those in front of them, to just make sure who was there? I know I was. I know you were, I missed one.
Yeah, I haven't missed anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this, we'll do them in order, so the May 20th, yeah, that's why, I was not there. So, okay, so there, there is a, a motion and a second on the table for that, is there, is there any further discussion on the May 20th minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will, we will vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstained? Yes. Okay, we recorded that. And then the next minutes were for June 1st. We were all there, Pat was not there, but he's not here tonight either. So, somebody wanna make a motion for June 1st?
I already did.
Okay. So, there's a second for June 1st as well?
Second.
And then, any discussion? Okay, we will vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, and that's unanimous, 'cause that's who's here tonight. Okay. Thank you. All right, so that was the first item with hold, the second item with the hold, what do you got?
Just a question, so on the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee, so this gentleman who had put in for David Marsh, he had asked to be the alternate, I was just wondering if we know a little bit about his background, or what interests he has, or more so what he is willing and interested in promoting when he goes to represent the town, 'cause I know it's a very controversial issue, and there's lots of different pieces in play. Is he here?
Yes, yes.
Hi. Nice to meet you all.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. I was just wondering, may I ask him a question?
Absolutely.
Please.
I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit about what your interests are in representing the town at the Ware River, Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee as the alternate, and what you see as a future for that area, as well as different uses for the space?
First of all, I'm new to town, moved in May 1st, so I'm brand new with the town, so, I'm glad to be here. Also, my property abuts the Burnshire River, which is part of the River, the Ware River Watershed, and in particular, my family wants to build a horse farm, so I'm interested in developing any horse trails that might be involved in the area.
And are you in support of other uses of those trails as well?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Prior to this, I was in the town of Tewksbury, I was a member, a founding member of the Friends of Tewksbury Open Spaces, I worked closely with the Open Space Committee, did a number of trail maintenance for hiking trails, built catwalks and bridges, and did trail maintenance there, so hiking is also important to me in general for the town, so that's my interest.
And are you also in support of mountain biking, and it's one of the uses?
Oh, I, yes it is. My only issue is that sometimes it causes extra erosion, but we have to just take that into account, because we can do better trail maintenance.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Sure.
No other questions?
All right, awesome, okay, so, so now that we're on that item, does anyone have any other items they wanna bring up on this? Okay, so I guess the, the motion would be to, to appoint Mr. Marsh as both an open space committee and Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee member.
All right, I will make the motion to appoint David Marsh as the open space committee member and the alternate for the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thanks for joining.
Okay, and our third item is the fire station lease.
So, just a couple questions on this, I did ask David right before we started, but I noticed on the lease itself, which I'm guessing we've been using for a little while, we do reference it as Board of Selectmen and not the Select Board, so we probably should fix that, it's both in the title, it's in the introduction paragraph, and Section 5.1 it comes up, where that's not referenced. And then my only other question is, I'm not sure what our current process or policy is, but do we generally send these contracts to KP Lab before we move forward?
Yes.
Okay, so they've seen this?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had.
Oh, okay, easy enough, so appreciate the thoroughness, as always, for that sort of review, and we'll make those changes, and I guess we'll, we'll, we'll now have a chance to act on the fire station lease.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, or, excuse me, award the contract for the fire station lease.
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay, unanimous. Okay, so we're gonna move on from consent, unless anyone else, anything further that popped in their head? No? All right, so how'd you make out?
I was able to get in touch with, how this went down.
Okay.
She will be here, this was five minutes ago, she said in about 10 minutes, so I do expect her here shortly.
All right, so...
She apologizes.
No, no problem. So, Damon, if you just hang on for a few more minutes, we'll get through some other items?
Okay.
Torture you? Okay, so we've got some announcements. And we'll start off first with, I don't know, David, you wanna talk to us about the upcoming holiday and office closures?
So Independence Day falls on Sunday and by the bylaws, the town hall is closed on the Monday following July fifth. You have a select board meeting scheduled for July fifth, so you may want to help hold it or you may want to move it to some other date.
Yeah, I'm gonna propose we move it to the sixth, so we'll send that around to everybody and you can all sort of let us know your availability, if you're out of town or whatever else, we'll figure out if we have a quorum or not.
That's fine.
Okay. And town office closure is just relative to that. So, okay, so the next would be update on upcoming events and I would say on recently executed events as well.
Yes, Hubbardson Fair went off well, even though everybody was freaking out about the rain in the morning. And let me tell you, setup totally sucked. It was wet and miserable. I was there chopping locks and everything else at six forty-five in the morning in the downpour. But once we got set up and everything kind of, the rain fizzled out, the sun was poking in and out and it was not too hot, not too cold, it was a beautiful day. There was tons of people, lots of entertainment and vendors and food and everything else. And everyone was just roaming around, actually enjoying the day, outside with other people. It was lovely. It was everything I could've asked for. So the Hubbardson Fair was very good this year, thank God. The rain went away and it was good. So that's a plus. So thank you for everyone that attended and anyone that, you know, come back again next year, we'll do it all again. So upcoming events, we have June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh is the townwide yard sale. You have till tomorrow to sign up to be on the map. Contact Sanderberry through Parks and Recs. August fourteenth, nine to one at the rec field, we have a bottle and can drive done by Girl Scout Troop one-one-eight oh nine. So if you've been saving your recyclables, bring them to the rec field on August fourteenth. Then August twenty-eighth, ten AM, dingy dash, rain date of the twenty-ninth, start building your cardboard boats. I'm officially accepting any sponsors, so if you have small business and you want some sponsorship, you know, you need some money to, you know, you need to, wanna send me some money to get a nice, pretty flag and get some shout-outs, I will hook you up. So, but yes, start building your cardboard boat, nothing but cardboard and duct tape. And if you've never been to this, this is definitely something you have to come to. It is the stupidest thing you'll ever see. It is so much fun to watch and it's just, it's only like an hour to two hours long and it's just fun. And then we also have September eighteenth, which is field day from nine to three at the rec field with rain date of the nineteenth. Just like pretty much the Hubbardson Fair, only the Lions take care of most of that and I just help a little bit with it, filling some vendors and stuff. But again, hopefully it'll be a good day and everyone come out and join us at the rec field and we'll have some fun. And that's what I got going on.
Well, awesome, as usual. How's it going as far as notifications to police and fire and all that stuff? Is that all, any problems with anything?
For what?
For anything? Dingy dash, usually the fire department's there and all that, but coordination schedules and all that?
No, I just walk in and I tell them, I just need some people in boat and they're good. Yeah, the fire department works with me all the time. And I've broken Chiefy's down. He works with me now very well. He's probably gonna love to hear that on video.
Congratulations. All right, okay, any other upcoming events anyone wants to bring up? All right, we will move on to new business. Actually, we won't. So we have now, we have Alice here.
I'm ashamed.
No, it's not at all. No, it's not at all.
It's terribly important to me, so.
But, so you guys, we are gonna have a joint meeting, so if you guys wanna open a meeting?
Yes. So we have a quorum.
We do, Madam Chair.
And I'll call a meeting to order.
Yes, Madam Chair, I.
And you've already announced it's being recorded and.
We have? We have, okay, so it sounds good. Thanks for coming. And we have select board and planning board joint meeting here for a community outreach meeting, which I'm gonna read. Is Royal Sun Farm LLC, sixty-nine Gardner Road. Royal Sun Farm LLC is hosting a community outreach meeting jointly with the planning board and select board. Discussion will be for a proposed marijuana establishment cultivation and manufacturing to be located at sixty-nine Gardner Road. Hubbardson, Mass. zero one four five two. We have Damon Schmidt here to represent Royal Sun Farm LLC. And, you know, you've asked, and we've always granted, time for whatever you need to come on to these meetings. And so, you know, you sort of have the fore here on how you wanna go about this.
All right, great. I'm gonna try to make it quick this time. You know, last time it was a couple hours, but. All right, everybody, Damon Schmidt from Royal Sun Farm. So I am going to basically do the same thing we did last time and go over specifically what the CCC requires us to go over, which is the Cannabis Control Commission. And then I'll just open it up to any questions anyone has.
Damon, can I just ask you real quick, before you go into that for some of this, for new, is just explain the plants sort of show where north and south is, where sixty-eight might be and just so people understand where that is.
All right, cool. So right here is Gardner Road, Route sixty-eight. So this is our plan that we just got approved from the planning board for our special permit for the cultivation side of things. So this is our driveway, kinda goes through the wetland crossing right here. So this is all wetlands over here and then kinda down here, so we're kinda surrounded by woods. And then we have our fence, which is running around the outside of the property with our security going around it. Currently, we have some temporary trailers, which I'm gonna be talking about tonight and replacing. And this right here is the grow field, which is in the commercial zone. And then we have a commercial residential agriculture line right here. And then we have our grow that's in the residential zone back here. So that is basically already been approved. We're going for our final license from the Cannabis Control Commission in the next couple of weeks. And hopefully we'll have some plants on the ground here in July or August. And then these nice little rectangle things are basically what is phase two of the cultivation special permit that we already have. So we're actually about to start that with the planning board, try to get that started. Basically, what we're doing is, it's probably gonna be a sixty by a hundred and fifty foot building. And that building's primary purpose is to dry the product, which basically you take marijuana down, you hang it, you dry it and you package it. So all of that's covered under the cultivation license that we already have with the CCC. So what we wanted to do tonight is add the possibility of a manufacturing license. Basically, because we're about to go through our special permit for phase two, we might as well do this all at once. No guarantees we're gonna do the manufacturing process. I just wanna have the license in case we need it. But basically what the manufacturing side of things is, is once we take down the marijuana products, you dry it. And after you dry it, you know, you generally have maybe ten, fifteen percent of the product that in the old days you'd throw away. Nowadays, you can turn it into oil, which people smoke, or they put it into their edibles. And so basically people call it trim or shake or just small buds. So we would get rid of them that way, instead of trying to sell them for cheaper, we could, you know, get some more money for it. So that would actually go in the front. So we're only allowed to have the manufacturing aspect of the business in the commercial zone. So we would put that within the fifty feet extension zone. And then the rest of the building, which is in residential, would be still for the drying of the marijuana.
So why are you here tonight? What part of the process are you in that brings you here?
All right, so the reason I'm here tonight is we're about to enter phase two of the cultivation special permit, which adds this building for drying and then takes away the freezer trailers. So currently, our plan is just to cut the product down, flash freeze it in our freezer trailers and then process it into live resin. But once we have this building, that will serve as a dry care facility. But the reason why I'm here tonight is to have a community outreach meeting for the Cannabis Control Commission for manufacturing license. So it's gonna be basically the exact same size building that we're gonna put in anyhow for cultivation. Just in the commercial side of it, we wanna have, open the door to have manufacturing. So manufacturing could involve an ethanol system, which produces distillate, which is what we really wanna do. But we're probably doing that in Templeton. We have like a hundred and fifteen thousand square foot facility we're starting to build over there soon. So we've got basically a major, the reason why we would do it here and not bring it to Templeton is it's just easy just to move it into another room rather than go through the CCC process of moving it under regulations. So we could do ethanol extraction, kind of the old thing to do is butane, but they have a new way to do it called CFC. We could do CO2. What we're doing in our Royalston facility that we're hopefully gonna be done with in two months is bubble hash mixed into rosin. So that's most likely what we would do here.
So you just described all manufacturing items, is that what that was?
Yeah, that's all the ways that you could process marijuana from the flower, which people smoke, into something else. So our cultivation license allows us to, you know, have a building, cut down the product and dry it, package it and sell it. But what we can't do is take that flower and turn it into, you know, edibles or, you know, vapes or, you know, oil, what people do dabs, they would call it, or wax. So we can't do that with the cultivation license, but this would allow us, you know, to have that ability in the front of the building.
Okay, so after your community outreach meeting, what's next for that process?
All right, so that's a good question. That's why I'm doing this, is we're already going for phase two of the cultivation process, which is to put this building in here.
Going with.
Going in front of the planning board for a special permit phase two or amendment to the first special permit.
Okay.
So I figured instead of, if we ever want manufacturing, I might as well just do this all at once. So that's why we're here tonight. So no promises we're gonna do this, but at least we'll have the license.
And is it under the same license still?
No, so it would be a whole new license from the Cannabis Control Commission. But if you've seen the process, the last one took eighteen months, so we're just getting this started. And I figured, we just went through a lengthy process with the planning board.
Yeah.
And so it's like, why do this a third time? We're gonna do it once, we should do it all at once.
And what percent of harvest would go through this process?
Well, right now, you have about ten, fifteen percent. Well, right now, our entire, our entire harvest goes through this process.
Okay.
You know, down the road. The problem that we're running into right now is my entire intention of having these freezer trailers is one, I wanted to have a grow this year. There's nowhere in the world we'd have a building built in time to get signed off by the CCC in a couple of weeks. So the idea was to use these freezer trailers for just this year and then take this frozen, the frozen harvest and move it to our manufacturing facility in Royalston.
Okay.
It's just, it's gonna be a lot for us to process in that tiny little facility. So that's just from our side. I would say ninety percent of all the manufacturers in Massachusetts want dry product. So what I'm offering right now is wet product. We're just taking the product down, not even drying it, throwing in bags and flash freezing it. And then there is a way you can process that. But the number one way to process marijuana is to have it dry first. And then preferably, I would use ethanol and then you get to distill it. And that's what, you know, people want. So there's an off chance that the planning board's here that we might do some speedy, speedy amendment and put like a hoop house there just for like October of this year to try to dry some product.
What's a hoop house?
A hoop house is, you ever seen just a normal greenhouse that, like you ever been in the bad forest? So any, like a normal greenhouse, it just goes from the bottom, you just kinda put it in, it's not connected to the ground really. And then we would just cover it with like a black, you know, a black sheathing. And put some cameras in there, dehumidifiers, some filters for, you know, charcoal filters. We're running into problems right now with, we're gonna have so much frozen product that I'm the only buyer at the moment, which is fine with me. But, so I have to, you know, buy my own product and moving it to Royalston, so.
Under a different entity?
Well, it's called Royalston Farm. But Royalston Farm and Royal Sun will probably merge at some point. So we don't mind buying our own product, but I'd rather, you know, have someone just write me a check. So, you know, that's the purpose of having a building, is to dry the product. So once I dry the product, I can, you know, sell it to ninety percent of the manufacturers out there. So, you know, we're just kinda making this up as we go along, so. I mean, I'm happy to own my own weed, but we don't have many buyers.
So can I ask the planning board a question? You know, you just referenced, you know, the recently approved plan, I think it's, you know, paraphrase, is that accurate? Not that I don't believe you, but.
Yeah, it's for outdoor grow only.
Okay, yeah.
And it was a very laborious procedure, because the bylaw we have has no guidance in it, really. So we had to go to town council for opinions on things and so on, but it's strictly an outdoor grow. It is also a complicated lot because of the commercial split zone. And there is a, in our bylaw, you can put a commercial use fifty feet into a residential zone if it's a split lot.
Yep.
Fifty feet, right?
Fifty feet maximum.
Fifty feet maximum. So, and the limit of the grow area in the residential district is ten thousand.
It's ten thousand.
So the flash freeze goes into, out of, I mean, goes into residential in this phase and then will get pulled out? Or is, does it not go into residential?
So in all the phases, we have, we'll have fifty thousand square feet of canopy.
Yep.
So that's in about a hundred and maybe ten thousand square feet of area. So we have forty thousand square feet in the commercial zone.
Yep.
And then we'll have ten thousand square feet in the residential zone. But the trailers are only in commercial.
They're in commercial.
Yeah, so everyone's just pulled up in the commercial.
So as of now, it's all in, there's no outside of the zone that it's currently zoned for? Is that accurate?
Well, you could theoretically have the trailers in residential.
Okay.
So with the cultivation license comes some sort of a building to dry it.
Yeah.
I think I'm the first person to try this trailer thing, by the way, so.
I guess the question we have, Damon, is the limit, I mean, there's two questions. One of which is, it's only outdoor grows allowed in residential, whereas all marijuana uses are allowed in commercial side, right? So in theory, the only thing you should be able to do in that residential zone is grow in that ten thousand square feet. So we would like to see all the buildings in the commercial zone, I think, I can't speak for the board, but that's one interpretation. And the conflict we've had over this, and actually town council sided with, with Royal Sun on some of the issues and also on some of the issues, but it's, it does a building, are the building requirements. So if you have a building, they're arguing, well, an agricultural use, you know, you could have a barn, you could have a storage facility, it would be, but this is a commercial use. So that's, that's an issue that I'm just flagging for your plan there, Damon. If you kinda put this in the residential zone, and we've already had a lot of complaints from the residential zone about water use and I don't know whether the manufacturer uses water, so I can't do that. And with respect to hoop building, this permit has been granted, signed, sealed, delivered, under great pressure to get it done. So I, we can't sit here tonight and say, yes, you can put in a hoop building.
Oh, yeah, no, that's for phase two. I'm gonna get that in my phase two amendment.
So I think you, but I do think that that, don't start building something, you know. You have to come to us and these have to be resolved.
Oh, yeah. My only thing about the residential is the town of Hubbardson has a bylaw that allows outdoor marijuana cultivation in all of residential. And with an outdoor cultivation license, you need a building. Like, there's no way in the world you guys could, no offense, but that argument's not gonna go well, I don't think. Because every, like, you guys made a bylaw that says you can have marijuana cultivation and the CCC will not sign off on a license unless you try some freezer trailer stuff or you have a building.
The component of the manufacturing, however, is what is in question here.
Oh, the manufacturing has to go in residential.
Even the building that you're potentially proposing, that has the manufacturing capabilities, has to stay, from what I understand, in a non-residential, meaning therefore in the commercial zone.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
So it's gotta be very, very clear on that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's why I was, I said in the beginning, you know, the manufacturing part is in that fifty foot extension and the rest of the building is in residential, but it's only used.
I think even from that perspective, we have some concerns. And the reason is, is what you can extend into the residential section at this point in time, I think, is, quite frankly, is the growing, not necessarily the manufacturing. So we gotta make sure that we have things very clearly set up. I don't have the answers here.
Yeah, all right, well.
If you wanna present it, you can present it, but to understand that from our perspective, we will not only review it, but we also will review it with the legal counsel.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And I think what the warning here is, is do not start building unless this has been resolved.
So, okay, so we have a community outreach and we do have a question from the community here.
I don't think the state of Massachusetts allows for a commercial marketable growing anywhere in residential in this town or any town. So your statement wasn't true. Like, if I wanted to grow ten thousand square feet or whatever of weed, I would have to have a license and I would have to be in the zone to carry for that.
Yeah, it's zoned in, residential. Everywhere in Hubbardson is zoned for commercial. The bylaw of Hubbardson allows for outdoor marijuana cultivation.
Not for commercial use?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
So.
Because it's, it was a poorly drafted by law.
So that, I'm not the one, that what drew us to the town is literally, I've never seen this, is the town could've not had anything in residential. But they specifically called out outdoor marijuana.
Outdoor marijuana grow is allowed.
In any residential zone?
It's got limits, right?
Yeah, it has ten thousand square feet.
With a special permit.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't make the bylaw, so.
Okay, do you guys wanna say, any of you guys?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So you wanna put the building kind of a little bit in residential? And that other one is the hoop building.
So we're in what's called a zone A.
Yep.
So. That's zone A. So there's only one little area of our property that's not in zone A. And that's, that's the area we're gonna put the building in.
Okay.
Or else we would, I mean, if Bill Murray would let me, I'll put the building here.
But the gray, but the gray spot is the residential side.
This is, well, the gray spot is the residential side of the grow.
Yeah, okay. And that bottom little square that you have, your rectangle, is that the hoop house or is that the building?
Those are the freezer.
Yeah, yeah.
That is the residential commercial zone.
No, no, no.
Where they were. This rectangle.
This rectangle right here. What is this?
Oh, that is my make pretend building that would extend into the residential.
Okay, so then what is this?
That's, I was giving two ideas of where to go.
Two different spots, okay. So here's my question.
Yeah.
If we can only put ten thousand square feet of canopy in residential, how big of a building would you need to process? I'm just saying, if I were to build it in my backyard and I got residential, I'm gonna put ten thousand square feet, how big of a building would I need to process ten thousand square feet of canopy?
With a real dry care facility?
Would it be that big?
Well, let's see, I can do the numbers for you.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, I can do the numbers in my head.
And the only reason why I say this is because I think you're gonna fall into a minefield. If you can squish that back into the commercial somehow and keep it more on the commercial side, I think you're gonna have less of a headache. If you start screwing around with putting it in the residential, it's, you're just, you're just opening yourself up.
Well, it's, well, just add on, and to be clear, you're gonna, you're gonna dissect that line, right? You're literally saying a portion of your building is gonna be in commercial
Yeah.
and a portion of your building is going to be in
Residential.
residential. And you're gonna do what you're allowed to do in the commercial side, separate from what you're gonna do in the residential side.
Correct.
But the building's gonna straddle that line.
Yeah. I mean, that, unless I can work a deal out with one Bill Murray to, to put the building here, we'd rather put the building all the way up here. But we'll see. You, you know, you just have the wetlands, so you're dealing with, there's no, you know, within a hundred feet of wetlands here. So we're not in zone A, we're not near wetlands. That's kind of where we picked it out, but honestly, we could, we could, yeah, we could keep going over where the building is, but.
For your manufacturing, is water required?
Um, so if we do bubble hash, uh, yeah, we would use water.
So you would like to be closest to the source of water, right?
They were honestly, at this point, doesn't matter because we ended up putting our well here and then we're making a four hundred foot run over here to our tank right now, so. We're gonna have water piped all over the place by the time we're done.
I have one problem is if the limit is ten thousand square feet in the residential zone, he's looking to process forty thousand square, fifty thousand.
That's what I'm saying. If you only had ten thousand square feet, you wouldn't need that size building. That's my point.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have that size building because you're gonna be processing a whole bunch of the commercial side in that building. And that's why I'm saying if you can squish it back on the commercial side, I think you're gonna have a lot less headache.
I might be able to. I might be able to squish it here and we'll make a two-story and we'll grow on top of it. I'm not kidding. Well, because we lose, once we do that, we start losing canopy.
Yeah.
So that's why it's in here because, the reason why it's in here is because I'm not worried about losing canopy because I only can do ten thousand. Once I go here, I start losing canopy, but my response to that would be grow on the second floor, which is fine. So I've always wanted to put a greenhouse on a second floor.
So just so I can scale it for everyone here and myself, so this area that is, got this special hash that's not gray, is how many square feet-ish?
That's forty thousand square feet of canopy in about a seventy thousand square foot area.
So that's about, so, okay, so almost two acres. So acres around forty thousand square feet, forty-two thousand square feet, so just scaling it for everybody. So that we're talking, this area from here to here is around two acres-ish, just a.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you made a run from here to here, I mean, you're looking at like a thousand feet maybe, just off the top of my head.
Okay.
So.
A rule of thumb is that the canopy, double the canopy to get the grow area. We've learned a lot about.
Yeah, we, we did. Well, I, I did too and then I learned about Sal Manders. Thank you, Bill. Um, but yeah, so I actually have to read some stuff off to you guys before we get sidetracked here. This is just gonna take five minutes. So the CCC has fourteen things that I have to read down. And I'm just gonna read them before my phone dies. Here we go. So, ta-da. The location is sixty-nine Gardner Road. The type of establishment is a recreational marijuana, or it's called adult use manufacturing on an existing cultivation site. Uh, is the proposed establishment allowed under current zoning bylaws and ordinances or zoning amendment required? It's under your current zoning. Does the proposed establishment require local zoning permitting? Yes, planning board, select board, a lot of people sign off, board of health. Uh, what, and, um, building's back there. What permits are required? You need a special permit, both a site plan and a special permit plan. Um, ta-da. Is there a local board of health regulation pertaining to MEs and MTCs? No. Does the proposed location comply with a five hundred foot buffer zone from existing public or private schools, K through twelve buildings? Yes. Uh, do local bylaws or ordinances create a smaller buffer zone? No. If the applicant is moving into existing building, uh, will the premise comply with the security requirements required by law? Yes. That's really all I have to say. What steps will be taken by the establishment to prevent diversion of minors? Uh, we don't sell to the public, we only sell to other manufacturers and retail stores, so that is not our problem. Uh, how will the applicant ensure that the location, uh, is safe? We just answered that one. Uh, ju- ju- duh. How will the applicant ensure that the location will not constitute a nuisance to the community as defined by law? Uh, we go to the planning board and they have a special permit. Uh, how will the establishment possibly impact the community? Uh, has the municipality passed a local tax option? Uh, they did pass a local tax option, but that's for retail and we're gonna be paying some sort of a fee to the town as well as hiring from the communities. Um, what are the details of the host community agreement? We do not have one yet, uh, and that's just what they literally have on their website after.
We don't have one, meaning we don't have one for this.
We won't have one yet for the manufacturing.
Okay.
So that's what we're here. So Harberson's bylaws want you to have this meeting first.
Yeah.
And then you go through the fun process.
So what do you do next? Do you notify the cannabis, cannabis control commission that you've done this? Or does it, is it just something that you have to check the box that ultimately when you submit to them, you've done it?
Yeah, so within six months of submitting, uh, within six months of this meeting, I have to put an application in. So basically, I would need an HCA signed. So that's why I didn't get back to you because I knew we were in the process of doing a whole new HCA. Yeah.
Um, Damon, with permits, you also have to get a septic system permit from the board of health?
Oh, yeah, set for the porta potties or?
No, 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 for your.
Oh, for, sorry, for this building, yeah.
Yes.
Porta potties, the last one.
You didn't list any criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's site plan, special permit and board health permit.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so anyone have any, uh, questions?
Yep.
Damon, how big, how big did you say the building was? We want it to go sixty by one fifty.
So how are you gonna address the need for sprinklers?
Put them in, we put them in, I guess.
What about the water supply?
Uh, we're looking at getting a tank. Yeah, so right now we're planning on getting a five thousand gallon tank and then we have like three smaller tanks. I'm not the grower, so I think there's three smaller tanks that reach three hundred gallons.
That will be dedicated specifically to the sprinklers?
Um, well, I was about to get to that. So we got a bigger tank that we might be getting, it's just twenty-one thousand fi- uh, gallons just because we have now a limitation on our water usage.
True.
So we're trying to figure out how to not have a tanker truck ever come in here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we might go with an even bigger, you know, tank. But I don't know, I, I would think that's something that we would discuss with like the fire, you know, fire department.
Is this kind of employing people in town or do you need to bring people in?
Well, we don't have any of our own people yet, but, I mean, we're from Royalston, so we got a couple of people up there. Um, but yeah, basically just gonna be local hires. Um, so right now with our outdoor issue, how we're doing it, um, we don't have that many people working there because we're gonna be growing, it's called automatics. Um, but once you're inside, everything's by hand, so.
Does the local hiring start?
As soon as you get the building up. So it'll be for next year, it'll be for next May. So we have like a three-person crew this year. Um, so it's kind of sad, but.
Is your building, uh, specification dependent on the type of extraction that you will be utilizing, either ethanol, the CO2, bubble hash, et cetera?
No, so we're gonna build the building out for primarily to be just a dry cure facility.
Yeah.
Uh, and then depending on what we do, we'll kind of dictate what kind of a room we build out.
Again, there's no preconceived understanding that a, I'm just giving you as an example, that ethanol extraction facility, uh, manufacturing facility requires different, uh, building code requirement versus the CO2 versus a
Yeah, yeah.
Bubble hash.
Yeah, if you have bub- yeah, if you have bubble hash in there, we're gonna have to have something different for ethanol. I mean, they have, it's like fireproof rooms they have. I mean, that's something that we, we're gonna cross during the special permit, but.
Damon, if and when this building goes up as you're proposing here, how many employees do you think you would need to operate it?
Well, if the building goes up, you know, the building's going up primarily for dry cure. So, you know, you're talking maybe ten people at harvest. Um, but, you know, if you get into an actual manufacturing process, you know, you probably have two to four people running that during the day.
Full-time?
Yeah, full-time.
So when you say full-time, it's not seasonal full-time, but it is
Oh, no, it's, it's.
Twelve months of the year?
Yeah, I, I should have, um, so they, you know, we're, depending on how we do this, you know, say we start harvesting in the summer. Um, you know, it, it could take them into November, December, maybe to process it.
But you have, we have some time where you are not going to be doing anything as from a manufacturing perspective?
Yeah, yeah. It, it's basically just a manufacturer on pros- you know, our own harvest.
And you would never consider manufacturing anything other than your own product? Meaning that you would not import anything from somebody outside of the town of Harberson or what you've grown there?
No, definitely, definitely not.
So what have you done so far at sixty-nine Gardner Road?
Uh, we got a fence permit last year, so we basically have set this up. We got, um, you know, conservation permission to put in the crush zones, so we did that. Um, we basically got the field almost ready. So we're waiting for our building permit, so.
So you have the fence up?
Yeah.
You have.
Not the entire fence, but mostly.
You have some, some lights or security cameras up or something or the poles for them or something?
We have poles.
Poles.
But we do not have, uh, the full secu- the, the security company's waiting for a, a building permit.
Okay.
They're national companies, so.
So how, how close are you to starting to grow?
Uh, well, next week, hopefully, we have the signed paper from the town, so we'll register that on the deed. Uh, and then we're gonna call the CCC in, well, I'm gonna call the CCC in this week, a little early, but we're gonna call them in to, uh, come inspect. So once they come and inspect, um, they put you on the next month meeting. So the meeting is July fifteenth and August twelfth.
So the signed paper from the town is what? You just said you need to get it signed.
Um, so it's the, I don't know all the fish language, but it is, uh, planning board signs the, uh, special permit, twenty days goodbye.
Okay.
It's a appeal period.
And that ends on Monday. Um, so once that happens, we can officially get a building permit, which means, you know, we're officially ready for an occupancy. Um, but you don't really need occupancy to get the CCC to come inspect. So they have to come inspect everything.
Yeah.
To reach out to the town and the police chief and all that. Um, but they come, usually spend a day here to make sure that, you know, every square inch of the site is under camera.
Yeah.
So that's why we ended up having to buy the freezer trailers, because we've had to, you know, poke holes in them and put cameras all in. Um, so every square inch, it's gonna take them a while since there's a hundred thousand square feet they gotta look at, so.
During the first phase of this project where we had the special permit, uh, the electric utility became an issue several times.
Yeah.
What's the projection for the, uh, utilities that you would need for this manufacturing, uh, getting into phase two? How is that, if anything, different?
So right now we've got a work permit from National Grid, so they are taking their sweet time. But they, uh, they need to put a pole in somewhere here or actually probably here, because there's no electricity on our side of the street. So they need to put a pole in, then we're gonna run it underground, put a pole in, another pole, and then we'll run it out there. So I mean, I would anticipate, um, by, you know, April of next year, we've got electricity from the street. So that's, that's when we need electricity. So I don't really need electricity for this here from the street.
You need it for the freeze trailers?
Well, the freezer trailers run on diesel, but we, um, we got a thirty-eight thousand, we have thirty-eight thousand kilowatt, or thirty-eight kilowatt and then a twelve kilowatt generator. And then RJ McDonald threw a nice thousand gallon thing up there or something, it's huge, for propane. So we're basically just running off of generators for this year.
I'm sorry, you said propane, but then you said diesel at the beginning.
Well, and, so the, it's a, you know, tractor trailers, so they run the road, so they have a diesel, fifty gallon diesel tank. So we could run them off of diesel if we really wanted to.
Right.
Um, but, you know, they're, we're hooking in our new little transformers, um, to the, uh, to the generators. And those freezer trailers.
The generators that are operated by propane?
Yeah. And the freezer trailers only turn on at harvest time. So this year it's gonna be October. So we're gonna magically pull off an August planting with an October harvest. It's magical.
So are these, are these reefer boxes with, with wheels on them or are they on the ground?
Yeah, no, it's reefer boxes.
With wheels?
No, unintended. Yeah, no, wheels, yeah, it's eighteen-wheelers.
Okay. And then, and you're running them from propane?
Yeah. We haven't turned them on yet, so hopefully they work. But we're so late this year, you know, I had aspirations of having ten thousand pounds, but, uh, that would be sixty thousand or fifty thousand pounds wet and that's why we have two trailers. Unfortunately, this year's gonna be sad and we're growing, uh, what are called automatics. So they have two different kinds, a sixty-day kind and a sixty-five-day kind. So usually automatics are eighty days for their cycle and automatics means it doesn't follow the sun. So I don't know if anybody knows anywhere that grows marijuana around here, but it usually comes
Just you.
September, just me. So it usually comes due in September or October, depending on the sun. But they have what's called automatics and they can come do any time between sixty and eighty-five days. So we're using like the earliest ones we can find. So we'll plant in August and it'll be done in October.
Wow. So how many, how many harvests of automatics can you do?
I mean, if you wanted to.
If it takes that quick, if it's that quick?
Well, if we really, we wouldn't do the sixty or sixty-five days, they only produce two, two ounce, two to three ounces a, a piece.
Okay.
And it'll probably only produce like an ounce and a half this late, if we planted in June, two to three ounces. Uh, but they have automatics that we would use that grow three to four and a half ounces. Um, like our regular, like our regular plants, if, what we're planning on doing this year are about thirty-two to thirty-four ounces a plant.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we would have had, you know, up to four thousand plants. So we were hoping for, you know, almost ten thousand pounds, um, which would have been really good for the town. Um, so, you know, probably would have been like a couple hundred thousand easily for the town, but since we're starting so late, you know, we might actually have like thirty thousand plants in there. So these things are like little suckers, they're like, uh, cucumbers. It's like, how would you plant cucumbers? So they're like, in a row of forty inches, you got three of them, bam, bam, bam. And then that's a foot and you go bam, bam, bam. So our entire layout would be for automatics is forty inches wide and then a twenty-inch path. So you're walking down twenty-inch paths all day.
Yeah.
So the paths like go this way, then eventually you gotta break if you gotta run out of there. So anyhow, I could keep talking all about that, so just stop me.
Okay, well, anyone have anything else, uh?
I just have one question. You said you had a place in Royalston.
Yeah.
Is that up and growing?
Uh, we're close. We're expecting to plant in October.
Okay, so do you have your final license from the CCC there?
So we have, uh, what's called a provisional. You get a provisional first, which means all your paperwork done, everything's, this town's already signed off like with a host community agreement. And then after you build your facility out, the cannabis control commission comes and does what's called a final inspection. And the moment they give you final inspection, you can plant. And then what happens is they can, you can grow all the marijuana you want, but you can't sell it to anybody. Until they come back and they come do what's called a, um, commence operation inspection. And they watch you grow or they watch you harvest your product.
Mm-hmm.
And then they say, oh, you know what you're doing, you're fine, and then they give you your final license. So it's a three-licensed process.
So have they come out to look at your building there yet or?
No, no. So we've already had what's called the architectural review done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that got approved. We don't have a building, so it's
Oh.
It's, we don't have a building, so it's.
I thought, the way you were talking, I thought you had a building and you're up and growing in Royalston.
Oh, oh, in Royalston. Um, so no, what we have in Royalston is we're building the facility out. We got a little messed up with the virus. So it's a twenty thousand square foot greenhouse, so we're about halfway done building it out. So, but we should have plants on the ground in November, October, November.
And Templeton's just, just started.
Yeah, well, I started, Templeton, I started two years ago, um, but we're, you know where the Valley Forest is?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we bought the Valley Forest and then like the house in front of it.
Yeah.
No, we're not closing it. So we rented, we actually rented it to the, like, they found a new owner for it, which was awesome. Uh, so he's got, you know, we're, we're not gonna kick him out, but then we bought the land next door from, uh, the electric company.
I meant from the town perspective, you're just kind of starting to lay the groundwork with the town, Templeton.
Yeah, we got a host community agreement a while ago.
Yeah.
And then we got a retail store going in there, um, so, yeah.
But not a production or manufacturing facility?
No, we're all, I can.
So whatever you can produce would have to be manufactured in Harbison that you can't in Templeton.
Well, we have freezer trailers, so, uh, the idea is to bring it to, uh, Royalston and freezer trailer.
From Harbison?
Yeah, bring it from here and then bring it there and just connect them. So once it's frozen, it's frozen.
Yeah.
Unless you get the manufacturing permit, obviously.
Well, ye- yeah, but we wouldn't have that building, you know, built till next like spring, so it'd be a while. So, yeah, we haven't agreed with the planning board. Once we get some marijuana in a trailer, we're gonna get it out here. So we can just go put, bring it into our facility and roast and plug it in. So the other thing is, is we're gonna maybe go through our phase two and in phase two, I'll throw a hoop house here somewhere on the property and we'll just dry the product this year.
What does plug in mean?
Oh, just a trailer, so just plug into electricity. You know, the freezer trailer, so they're.
So you bring the trailer and plug it in there?
In Royalston, yeah. And just, you know, once it's plugged in, we're fine. So just, however long it takes us to manufacture, you know.
Yeah. I did look through your application to CCC, we talked about you, we're gonna mentor someone, you're gonna grow for a year. So do you have any plans on staying with Harbison and running your business here or is this just a
No, that was me, so that's
Kind of started and then moving it on to someone?
That's Bowie across the street. So Bowie's at fifty-six Gardner Road.
Mm-hmm.
He's the one in the old Woodstow shop.
Yeah.
So he's who I used for my, so I own a piece of that as well.
Okay.
So I used to have that.
This is a whole separate.
Yeah, so, across the street, I, I used to like have that under control, and I was gonna build that out. Uh, but the CCC only allows you to have three retail stores.
Yeah.
So, I met my maximum of three. So, I got Phillips and Templeton and Waltham. Um, so, I, this was, no offense, but I took, you know, Waltham came up, I had to, I had to leave one, this was Hubbardston, so, no offense, um.
Well, no, the, the way the application read, it looked like you were gonna run it for a year and then disappear.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, yeah, maybe it's, I think within the first year, we were gonna mentor somebody.
Yeah, it kinda said something along the lines like, you would be phased out when someone else would be taking state.
Yeah, so, like, yeah, may- maybe it could've read like that, but basically it read that, you know, within the first year, we'd mentor someone, you know, get them their HCA, get them their site, get them up and running. So, that's what I did, uh, took a cut of, I own a piece of that, that fifty-six.
Okay, anything further for Damon, or the group?
You have another shot at me at the planning board special permit, so.
Okay.
It's awesome.
Alright, well, thanks for coming in, uh, let us know when, when the process is further along again, and we'll, we'll do what we gotta do.
Alright, that's Royalston, by the way, that was my, from my meeting a couple of years ago.
And how's Royalston been? Have they been an easy town to work with?
Um, yeah, Royalston's different, so, um, being up there at the Canadian border, we have some bylaws that are a little weird. So, they don't allow buildings bigger than ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So, I got it twenty thousand square feet, because it's agriculture, so it's not commercial. So, they let me go past the ten thousand.
Plus, you have to, you have the building done and all of that, and everything's finished.
Yeah, it's on sixty-eight if you ever wanna go down there.
I don't wanna go down there.
Alright, just keep on going up sixty-eight, but, alright, is that it?
Please, sir. Alright, all good, thanks, Damon.
Alright.
So, we wanna close that public hearing? Do you need to vote, or?
I think so.
Yep, so, uh, Madam Chair, at this point in time, we'd like to, uh, close the planning board meeting and close every, uh, adjourn.
One second, the planning board, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do the same.
Alright, um, I'd like to make a motion that we close public hearing for this report.
Second.
Seconded, discussion, seen none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, unanimous?
Before we go, though, we have an appointment.
Yep.
Yes.
This is, I think, so.
Um, yes, John DiMali is applied.
We do.
Yeah, it's been confusing because of the two positions.
Alright, I, so, right, so I'd rather just do it now.
Yes.
Okay, so you guys are still in session?
Yes.
And?
Well, no, we just went out of session.
We just went out of session.
Did you go out of session, or you just closed the hearing?
Have we?
I think the way I reported it was we were adjourned as a, as a, as a planning board, so, uh, if you wish.
Okay, what's the parliamentary, call it again, call it to order again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to call a planning board meeting to order again, for the specific purpose of appointing, um, a member to fill a vacant term.
A second.
Any discussion?
Question.
All in favor? We don't lie.
Alright, bye.
Right, back in session.
Back in session.
We just.
Alright, yeah, just a moment, point of order, real quick, so, Katie just brought up, so part of our consent agenda, um, again, I don't wanna know this yet, uh, exactly how this factors in, but let me just.
Yes.
Go into, so, the consent agenda you weren't here for.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I didn't mean, whatever, I'm just saying, there was, there was, there was a piece of this, um, that we went through, that, that one of the items was notice of vacancy on the following boards and committees. It was the Board of Health, the Planning Board, and the Housing Authority, which had four vacancies. And then I read, any interested person should send a letter to the Select Board, Town of Hubbardston seven, Main Street, Hubbardston, Mass. one four five two, requests are due July first.
Yes.
Okay, and you should've gotten, oh, okay.
I'm just saying, so that, that has been read, and, uh, voted on by the Select Board and accepted, um, uh, in our consent agenda. So, we have accepted to accept, uh, applications until July first.
Okay, so we can't vote tonight?
We can't.
Okay.
What if, so we, uh, are we appointing Erin, or, uh, Erica, uh, Erica, Erin?
Yeah, Erica.
Erica, sorry, I apologize, or no? Was that for tonight?
It was the, is it a vacancy? She's an alternate member.
Yes, but does she need to be reappointed?
She does need reappointed.
Reappointed, yes.
Yeah, we can do that.
But my understanding was we couldn't do that tonight, can we do that tonight?
Why couldn't we do that tonight?
Does it require any advertising? Does it require?
I don't know, David, what do you think?
When you have, you posted a meeting for tonight, um, you can take it up under any business not anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance.
That's your call.
Yeah, I know, I'm happy to do that. I thought there was an advertising issue, honestly, maybe there isn't. We would like to have Erica, she was very important, she was actually the last pulled on the special permit.
Yep.
Because we had a member that didn't come.
Yep.
Um, and she's been great, she's been to every meeting, tried to twist her arm and get her to run for the board. Uh, as a full-time member, she wasn't interested, um.
That's why you just gotta write her in, you gotta get friends to write her in.
No, no, we have, we, we really want, would like to see John reappointed too, actually, so, because he's the only member on our board that has kids in the school, for one thing, and he's a different, I mean, he's a very important.
I'm not arguing, I just, we just did this before, nobody said anything, and we didn't see the letter.
Yep.
So, I, I didn't see a letter from John, so it's like.
There should be a letter.
I have not seen that.
So, it sounds like we're talking about two different processes here.
We are.
There's the vacancy, which we, we have to give one, the Select Board has to give one week's notice before you can take action on that.
But, the appointment as an alternate, which is not a vacancy, that's something you can take care of right now.
One week's notice from when?
From tonight.
From tonight, okay.
Is a reappointment different than a vacancy?
Well, you're an alternate member, right?
Yes.
And you're asking to be reappointed as an alternate.
Yes.
You can do that tonight.
Okay, great.
Planning board can.
So, the planning board makes the suggestion, it's Select Board who actually votes on this here.
Right.
And you should've gotten a letter from us saying we'd like her reappointed.
I have not seen that.
Well, it just says upon the recommendation, doesn't have to be in the letter.
No, do it right now, do it right now.
Recommend it right now.
Right.
Yeah, and it's.
Do you wanna do that recommendation officially at this point in time?
I think she just did.
Sounded like it to me.
Yep.
There we go.
Okay, well, um, can you, so we have it for the, uh, for the motion, can you just, 'cause I don't think we have it in front of us, your name?
Erica Dak.
D A what?
D A C K.
That's so easy.
Yes.
You'd be surprised.
Okay.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the planning board's nomination for the alternate member of Erica Dak, for the Planning Board Associate? Did I say that right? Something close?
Associate member.
Associate member.
And, and it's a reappointment.
And it's a reappointment.
So, one year reappointment.
One year.
Second.
Okay, it's seconded, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, unanimous?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks for continuing on.
We'll see you back every first.
Okay, so you got adjourned?
We are adjourned. At this point, you wanna make a motion for the adjournment of the planning board meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, then that's good, thank you.
Take care of this here.
And again, I really apologize for not being honest.
Alright, um, so, moving on to new business, we've got, uh, Katie's family.
No, this is most of my troop, I have, trust me, I got three more girls working on another silver award, and another girl starting, one of these girls that earned their silver is now working.
Alright, explain this to us, then, item zero four six, which it says award Girl Scout Silver Awards for six of them?
Okay, so, one girl is not in our troop, the rest of them are from my troop, one one eight oh nine. So, my troop, one one eight oh nine, consists of the girls that are, earn their silver award, is Isabel Cobiello, Destiny Young, Summer Young, Jasmine Young, um, let's see, who else was there? There was Maddie Kyla. Is that five?
Yep.
Yes, okay, so those five girls, they worked with, um, the Open Space Committee, and they put in a butterfly garden up on Malone Road, which is, uh, state-certified a monarch waste station.
This is in the Malone Road recreation area?
Yeah, at the end of the road, there's an actual, there's a plaque and everything.
Yep.
That it's a, it's a monarch waste station for, um, to try to help monarchs, you know, give them food and everything, 'cause their habitat is disappearing. And we, they built a whole butterfly garden with the help of the Open Space Committee, um, and that was their silver award project. Now, there's another young lady for number six, which is, um, a Sarah Bunton, if I remember correctly. Um, I actually know this young lady, I know her family, and she is, lives in Hubbardston, but her troop is actually in Rutland, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of what she did, 'cause she's not in the Hubbardston district, so I don't know what she did. But she did also, I know she did get her silver award with her troop.
Okay.
So.
So, w- we are, we are doing what then, recognizing them?
I guess so.
So, can just congratulating them, we're gonna have their own special ceremony.
Yeah, alright, so I think that's what we're doing here.
Okay.
We're recognizing them on, on, on camera and all that sort of stuff, that we are proud of them.
Okay, yep, they're working on, I got three more working on another silver award, and I have one that's gonna be starting her gold award, we're going to Open Space next, this month.
Alright.
Yeah, it's, yes, there's a lot of children that are doing a lot of good things for the town, so, I'm not arguing.
Alright, great, okay, anyone have anything else you wanna add to that?
No, that's great, thank you, good stuff.
Sounds good, alright, so we have a, a discussion piece on, uh, item zero four seven, which is the Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee, uh, for one Select Board and one Planning Board. I think we had, uh, correspondence from Brad Harris, uh, from the, uh, Massachusetts, uh, uh, MRBC anyway, to, to talk about representatives. Um, David, I don't know if you know offhand, I, you know, we obviously had a Select Board, was it Jeff? Do you remember, was our previous?
I think it's Jeff.
I think it's Jeff, so, um, I see no reason why.
I would like to nominate Jeff, second.
Couldn't agree more, any discussion, seen none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, we will continue on with Jeff.
I'm not it.
In that capacity, and the Planning Board, I, I would just, um, defer to them so they can handle their own business, okay. Sounds good, uh, this, this is, um, uh, David, if you could send us through item zero four eight, which is discussion on the Hubbardston State of Emergency, um, you know, where things are at with the, the state of Massachusetts and, and where we're headed.
Okay, so, the governor lifted the state of emergency for the Commonwealth on June fifteenth. Other towns have decided that they are going to similarly lift their state of emergency. Uh, some of them have deferred that decision until July first, and some have deferred it until August first. Uh, my recommendation is that you lift the state of emergency, um, effective July first.
What's the advantage of postponing the lifting?
The, uh, the only advantage that I can see is, I, I can't really see anything for Hubbardston, you know, you s- have an opportunity to, uh, make expenditures to FEMA. But FEMA doesn't, uh, seem to have their act together in terms of reimbursements, so there's a danger of overspending, uh, thinking that you're gonna be reimbursed and it's not gonna happen.
So, if we lift the state of emergency, we can't leverage, we can't spend FEMA money that we could potentially get back?
Right. So, if you need to, uh, if you lift the state of emergency and then you find yourself in an emergency, the chair can declare another state of emergency. So, there's no benefit in maintaining the, the state of emergency, and there's every reason to lift it so that we can return to full normal, we're at the fifth, the fourth stage of the five-stage process of bringing town all back online.
Okay.
Um, and if we truly need it, then Dan and I will talk and he can, uh, declare the state of emergency is back in effect.
And you said, and you said the governor lifted it on the fifteenth, right?
Yep.
And we had the option to do it on July first, why not do it immediately?
You can.
Okay.
I would, I would wait till July first.
Why?
Uh, 'cause it'll be two weeks after the, uh, the, uh, to June fifteenth, and we'll be able to see the, if there was any incubation issues with the, with the virus.
Okay.
So, if numbers start ticking up.
Might as well. I don't care.
Okay, I motion that we lift it immediately.
Alright, but we can go back in, right? You said at any time, we can go back in?
It's a phone call.
Yeah, it's a phone call?
Yeah.
Alright, and there's no other things, other than we're just gonna wa- we're, the only reason why you're saying the first is just to watch numbers? To make sure it doesn't blow up? I'll second Chris's motion, then.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Yes. Um, okay, so that, the motion, no, it's two to two. Motion does not pass?
I'd like to make a motion that we lift Hubbardston's local state of emergency effective July first, as discussed.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, three opposed?
Whatever.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's three against one, um.
Sorry, Chris.
On lifting the, um, state of emergency July first, effective July first. Okay?
Okay.
Alright, um, item zero four nine, which is the American Rescue Plan Act survey results. Um, what it says here is the Select Board will review the rev- results of a survey among town officials. Purpose of the survey is to identify Hubbardston's needs to distribute ARPA funds, uh, as effectively as possible. David and I, uh, just, you know, full disclosure, I think I've, I've mentioned this before, but just to present company, David and I meet on, um, uh, on, or phone call anyway, every Friday morning to go over, um, you know, whatever we need to sort of go over. Uh, this was one of the items we discussed this previous Friday, that, that there was not much, um, uh, to go off, because people hadn't responded yet, so I'll just sort of set the table with that, so what are your thoughts at this point?
So, the results of the responses have been disappointing, we only got six or so responses.
Okay.
Um, they identify broadband as the highest need in the town, followed by economic development and, uh, lost revenue. Uh, but your, your sample size is only six people, so.
This was for just town officials?
I sent it out to the, every town official, every board member, every committee member, every agent.
Alright, and there's only six, yeah, that doesn't shock me at all.
So, and this is a potential of one point four million dollars worth of money that can be expended over the next couple of years.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's, it needs some more attention, and I think we just need to, to highlight that, because they, you know, there are a number of, uh, you know, categories, which was in our packet, that, um, are, are, that the main ones are broadband, um, you know, emergency services, lost wages, and then there's, you know, water, sewer infrastructure, that sort of stuff, that we really need to think about, whether or not there's something we can sort of fall into. So, um, you know, this is, this is an important sort of moment in time, I think, for Hubbardston to really pay attention to the opportunity that's in front of us here.
Yeah, and the regulations are pretty clear that you need to do some sort of needs assessment, you need to be able to draw that bright red line between what the, the virus did to the community and what you're gonna spend the money on, uh, so.
Yeah.
Um, it would be worth our while to spend more time on this and get a better, better picture of what the town thinks it needs.
No, I agree, so what, what, what sort of timeframes do we, do we have to, to work under?
Oh, well, we're gonna get, uh, first chunk of the money, half of it, uh, probably in July, mid-July.
And what money is this?
This would be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money.
And, and when you say we're gonna get that chunk?
We're gonna get that chunk, it's gonna be dis- distributed, uh, deposited with the treasurer.
Yep.
Who has to set up a separate account, which would be an interest-bearing account.
Yep.
And then we'd have to start drawing down that, um, that money based upon what we'd need to, uh, do for, um, repairing the, uh, the damage done by.
So, we're gonna get the money before we decide what we can, what we're gonna spend it on?
Yeah.
But we can't spend it unless we have viable reasons to spend it on.
Right, so, just a little bit of perspective, um, with the CARES Act, federal government gave the, uh, the CARES money to the common, Commonwealth. Commonwealth distributed it to cities and towns and districts. So, the Commonwealth was on the hook for the liability for the proper use and dispersment of the CARES money.
Yep.
So, that's one of the reasons why they were very cautious. Here, this is a direct appropriation to the town. Um, so, the town of Hubbardston is gonna be directly responsible to the federal government for the proper use of this money. So, we need to make sure that we have identified needs that are developed by the community, and we need to make sure that everything is run past council.
Yep.
Um, and that council, uh, expense is covered by ARPA.
Well, Heather's free, free, and so we're gonna just run.
Yeah, we're gonna have somebody to blame.
Right, so, okay, well, we just need to be creative and, and need to be, uh, honest and all those things that we normally are, so, um, okay.
I have a question.
Is there?
Sorry, Chris, um, David, I know when I was reading the documents on this, it was talking about there being a formula to calculate the lost revenues, 'cause I think when we looked at last year, we did okay, for the most part, we came out in the positive. Have, have we got any word of what that formula is, and have you been able to run it?
So, so, what you do is you take your two thousand nineteen budget, and then you increase the revenues by four point one percent, and then you compare that to where you actually were for twenty.
Okay.
Uh, and then you do it again for.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, another four point one percent. Right now, that delta is about sixty-two thousand dollars, based upon a very rough calculation that I made, um, one night when I couldn't get any sleep. Um, I have asked Kelly, our accountant, to come up with a proper, uh, scenario, but sixty, what did I say, sixty-two thousand dollars, that would be lost revenue, you can use that for anything.
So, can you, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, we're just, we're just talking here, but, you know, we spent a lot of CARES Act money on, um, getting through things we couldn't afford.
Right. Right.
But that was fake money, right? It was CARES Act money, so that wouldn't necessarily go into a normal calculation of what the effect would have been on us in, in that sort of a time. So, you know, I don't know if you can, if it's okay to extract CARES Act money, because it wasn't necessarily normal reality or not, you know?
Right.
So maybe those are some considerations we can make.
Another question, David. Do we know, I, I don't know if STAM, Small Town Ministries of Massachusetts, has taken this up yet or it's been on the list serve. But do we know what any of the other smaller communities are doing to get some feedback from their community members? An understanding of what this actually is and what their input is?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any examples of small towns doing this kind of survey.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
But there, you know, there are, you know, I just wonder how, what the latitude is. I mean, we don't.
Right, that's the million-dollar question.
We don't have sewer and water, right? But we have, we have a failing septic system that is from all of the buildings that we're in, plus the school. That in the event that that sort of, you know, went down during state of emergency or crisis, we'd be in a, you know, so can we upgrade that with something like, you know, just crazy questions like that? Those are the certain things that, that may fall in, that we would may, maybe not have the opportunity to do it any other time. So, yeah, we just need everyone who's got a, you know, idea to put it forward.
Is there, is there a rough guide of what these funds can be used for? For that?
It's a 151-page document produced by the, by the US Treasurer and I tried to fill that down into the survey. So if you look at the survey.
Yeah.
That's the kind of stuff you can spend money on.
All right, well, let's just make sure we put this on our next agenda as well. So now that we've understood the importance of it a little bit more.
Yeah, we have official numbers now. It's one, one million, 1,443,421, that's an official number now.
Okay.
And there's a fairly extensive write-up on the administrative report.
Yep.
Along with graphs and discussion about liability and other horrors.
Yep.
Okay.
So are you planning on sending out that email, I guess, again, repeatedly with like, required?
Exclamation point.
Yes, like, do it now.
Yep.
Very important.
Where's the results of the survey?
It was in.
It was a packet?
This, yes.
Is it in, did you send it an email?
Yeah, it's, it's right here. No, it's right here in your, in the Google Drive.
Oh, the drive I can't get into?
Yeah, hold on.
So, I guess, David, even when I was looking at the survey, one of the reasons I think I hesitated to respond is because I didn't really understand some of the sections. Right? I think some of these concepts are harder for folks and they're very broad and, you know, as Dan brings up, you know, it says invest in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. So most of our residents can understand the broadband part.
Not added to the drive.
And water and sewer may be things we need, but they may be thinking the same as Dan was thinking and I was thinking. Well, we don't currently have that, so can we invest in something we don't have? Like, if the purpose of these funds is to replenish and put us back whole, make us whole from our losses from COVID, does this really count? Because it's not, it would be putting us ahead, not really capturing us where we're at. So I think it's just confusing to folks to look at this and try to figure out what we're after.
There's no way we're the only ones having the same confusing conversation, right? So, you know, but, yeah, I hear you, but can I make the argument is that it's, it's, you know, it's not putting us ahead, it's making us prepared for next time? Like, is that okay? Right? And so.
If you package it in terms of addressing an inequality and rural communities.
Right.
Are on the lower part of the pecking orders than urban communities with respect to infrastructure. So, yeah, if you make that connection between inequality, addressing an inequality, then you can use the money for that purpose.
Right? No, all right. All right, okay, well, let's, let's make sure we, we do what we just said we're gonna do, which is address it again and try to get more people involved in the, the discussion.
I did ask the assessors if there was any evidence of distressed sales or short sales in the last year.
Yeah.
There weren't a whole lot of examples of that.
Yeah.
I asked the treasurer about tax title. Did you have more people going into tax title than the year before and the answer is no?
Yeah, no, I agree. I feel like we knew the answer to all of those, you know, I think it's just, the one that I always went to was the invest in the sewer, water and broadband infrastructure. Because, because we didn't, you know, we didn't get hurt as much as we thought we were gonna get hurt by this, when we were scared like everyone else last March. You know, it just didn't, we didn't know what to expect. We weren't spending money on anything, you know, it just didn't end up. But maybe we were lucky and maybe that this is coming out now can prepare us better for next time when maybe we wouldn't get lucky. So that's what we need to, need to consider.
It's a little bigger.
Okay. All right.
You're like, oh, bye.
Anyone have anything else further on that or can we move on?
We can move on.
All right, we will move on then. So the next is, so playground demolition and site safety. So I'm just gonna say, say two things. So there's, there's two playground situations going on in the town right now. The first is Rainbow's End Playground. Yeah, if you have kids, we basically just said, you know, you know, stay home.
Yeah.
But anyway, hear me out for a second. So we have the Rainbow's End Playground, which is at the rec field, which is, you know, the town was fully behind reconstructing. And it's just, you know, happens to be at the wrong time of year, which is when school gets out and nobody was able to go outside for a year and a half. So, but, but that is one item for discussion. The other one is the playground at the Hubbardston Center School, which is closing tomorrow for the summer because we have a, for the first time ever, you know, funded by a.
I don't understand why that one has to close.
You would if you were, so I've been present at all the, the meetings, the weekly meetings for it and the, the activity that's gonna be going on in that area.
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot and the staging and the, the lools and the different areas they have for access. And again, this isn't just coming from, from the town or whatnot, this is coming from the school district.
Yeah.
Who operates it all as well. And they have people coming in and out of there all summer long as well, not just custodial staff, but actual administrators coming in and out of there. So they were very much part of the discussions on it, as far as what to do during the summer when that heightened activity was happening. So the plan is, and we've seen the contractor's schedule, is they should be far enough along, which is crazy, first day of school, September first next year, see that? Anyway, they should be far enough along that we've, we've sort of told them that, look, your, your schedule shows you 75% done or whatever by that time. Their, their completion date is, is September 21st per their contract, but we're gonna scoot your way out of that area because it needs to be open for school again. So that was part of the, not, their entire project is not closed, but when school opens, we're gonna open that up again. So that's currently where it stands. So it was really just a straight up, that area and it's gonna be busy all day long.
Are they like closing off the whole parking lot?
We are sectioning off a section of that area by the, per the, the school's request and the administrator's request, by the playground for parking, just for school people for the summertime. It's like eight spots or something like that. And we talked about how we could configure temporary fences and we tried to make it so that it was open, but it was just no safe way because these guys need a lot of room.
Yeah.
It's, it's a big project.
Park on the lawn on the.
It's a big project, I'm telling you. So I, I'm a contractor, so I was like trying to work it with them.
Because I was part of Sander's idea was.
Yeah.
That's closed, send them up there.
I can't, right, so it's, it's.
And when I saw that, I was like, oh, okay.
So it's, it's unfortunate and it's just, it's unfortunate. So a few months where, where it's just from a public safety standpoint and, and, you know, you can put temporary fencing up, but you're joining it up to other fences, people can just go over a four-foot fence that's part of the playground and get over into the work area. Just inviting people, if we leave it open, in my opinion, after being present at all these meetings and seeing what their operation's gonna be like, it's just inviting people into a situation with kids that is probably not a good idea.
So what is the concern?
With what?
Why, why are we discussing this?
I think we were just discussing it just to note it that it's happening because the notice, notice went out.
A lot of upset families.
I just answered that because we were talking about it.
Because of, there's a lack of playgrounds now during the summer.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of upset families in town, which I understand.
But we're doing it for all the right reasons.
Well, it's kinda, the one in the center, you gotta, it had to be redone.
Right.
You know, at the rec field. And then the one at the school is because safety.
So it's a bad time of year to be doing it, there's a lot of disappointment because we're doing it, but.
If there weren't folks happening at the same time, I don't think it would be such a problem.
But we don't have that luxury, unfortunately.
Apparently not, no.
We do not, but we do have an item, if you look on here, there is an item, a, a potential action and a motion specific to the Rainbow End Playground that we do need to take some action on as well. So to answer your question further, there is some stuff that we need to do there. So if you guys can take a look at that and see if somebody's interested in, in making a motion.
Which one? Where are we at?
Zero five zero.
And that playground, Dan, is called Rainbow End?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to declare the existing playground structures at Rainbow End as obsolete and permit demolition as discussed.
I second that.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Thank you. So we, we have partially discussed this already, but this is, this is, I guess, just moving forward, our July and August select more meeting dates. Typically, we are every two Mondays. Oftentimes in the summer, people are, are off. So I guess we just wanted to bring it up to make sure that we understood if people were not gonna be around or not. I know it really hasn't been a thing for the last year plus, but, you know, we discussed July 4th already, the holiday, how that, that is gonna be celebrated or recognized on the 5th.
Yeah, that one I won't, I won't be around for.
July 6th, okay, but we're still gonna have, at this point, July 6th, we'll circulate it out. If there's more that can't be there post this meeting, then we'll, 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 we'll change that. But I guess this is just something while we're sitting at the table, does anyone have any, any, you know, issues with normally scheduled bi-weekly meetings through July and August? I do not.
No, other than that one, no.
Okay.
I just have one question, Dan. So I pulled on the G drive, the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for 21 and 22, but I don't, I'm thinking it's not correct because it says July 12th and July 27th.
Because normally it gets bumped because July 4th week is a holiday week, so normally it just, nobody does anything that week because it's a holiday week. So that was, that's the way it's, it was last year too. We're pretty sure it got bumped because of the holiday. Because most people like are gone or busy or whatever, take long weekends.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, David, so we're gonna have to, I mean, it's a, we're gonna have to look at this to see if these just were carryovers from last year or what they were. So. Because our next meeting, the next Monday is the 28th, so the 5th would be the next meeting, not the 12th. So, all right, we'll have to get back to everybody on that, okay? At this point, we're just gonna set our next meeting, which will be properly posted and all that, for Tuesday, July 6th. And then we'll make sure that we're clear about our meetings after that, okay?
Thank you.
What would the, what would the alternative to this be?
To what?
The motion for these meetings.
I don't think we need to make a motion. So there is no real reason to make a motion in my mind. So I, I think it's just, you know, if I.
Was there a thought that we wouldn't have meetings?
Uh.
In the summer?
No, no, I don't think we wouldn't have meetings, but sometimes the summer's slow, oftentimes it is. And, and just from being on the board a bunch of years, there have been times where we've, we've canceled a few summer meetings because no one was gonna be around and there wasn't much to talk about.
Everybody's on break.
Right. Okay, next item, old business. We, we already went through the, the Country Hand Scholarship, which was great. And then we went through, well, we didn't go through this with Damon. I was hesitating whether to bring it up or not, but I wanted to talk about it a little bit more and not necessarily have to deal with it, but let's deal with it now in some capacity anyway. So what this is, something we've, we've not shied away from letting him continue to put on and discuss, something, I know, David, you've got some, some opinions on. Town council's had some opinions on, so let's discuss it and I'll just go through it a little bit. And what, what this is, is this has to do with the changing of the previously agreed host community agreement with Royal Sun Farm, who, as many of you seen, have seen based on our, our previous discussion, they would like to have us change that community agreement because they're not handling their outdoor grow this season as they originally anticipated. So what they were gonna originally do was grow it, I guess, during a normal time and have the facility to be able to dry it. And our host community agreement is based on weight. So if you can imagine, when you grow a plant and it's wet because it's alive, it is, it's got a lot more weight than when it's dried. So since they're not gonna have the facility to be able to dry it, they're gonna flash freeze it, which effectively preserves all that weight, which is the water inside it that freezes. And then so something is five, I think he's worded a few times, so it's five times heavier than normal, something like that? Some, some amount that matters financially a lot. So some, it's gonna be a lot heavier and so his, he has, his contention has been that, you know, he, he can't afford to pay us what he's agreed to this season because he is gonna have a much heavier product than he expected and therefore he wouldn't, because when he ultimately sells it, it will be dried. But on our property, for lack of a better way to put it, it's still gonna be wet and weighed at that point. So, I don't know, I mean, we didn't, we didn't talk to him about it tonight again. Do you have anything further to add in that summary?
No, thank you, Sam. You hit the nail right on the head.
Good enough, so I guess, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know, what do we, what do we think? I mean, I don't want him to not be able to do the.
But if, if the existing host community is based on dry product.
It's not, it's just based on weight.
It wasn't.
Which was anticipated to be dry weight.
It was.
Okay, so. I mean, it's pretty straightforward to me. We, we vote to change it so that it continues to be based on dry weight?
You wouldn't be changing it.
We wouldn't be changing it if we were gonna, based on.
Okay, then leave it alone.
So, okay, I, and, and David, I think you agree with that? Or you've stated that, that is a position that council has maybe advised?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if I really agree because I just, just from a business standpoint, I don't think they can do it.
He won't, he won't, he, he can't afford to ship it out wet. It would pay the town too much money because as soon as he moves the product, I've been watching all these planning board. Let me tell you, and, and concom videos and everything else, it's, it's been an interesting ride. And if it's, if it's wet, if he grows it and he packages it up.
Let me just interject, maybe you misunderstood me.
Yeah.
We can't expect him to pay us the percentage of the wet product.
Yes.
If I, if I said that wrong, I apologize.
You did.
Okay, you did then, yeah, because you said, okay, so you want to, you're looking at changing it so that way we take an account.
Yeah, we absolutely have to amend it.
Yeah, because he won't.
Otherwise he'd go out of business.
Yeah, well, he won't grow.
Right.
And, and again, I, I guess I'd like to know that we can, you know, caveat it with just this once, you know, I mean, or have the right to renegotiate or right to, yeah, I don't know how to exact the word.
Well, can it be like done for one season?
Right, that's what I meant.
This one season.
Yeah.
We will allow it. In other words, next year, he has to get through the special permit process for phase two and get his building in, which, that's gonna be a whole hot mess because of the residential line, I feel. But that's, again, their planning board and him, not me. So I just watch. And, yeah, so can we make it so it's just one growing season?
Absolutely, why not?
Okay, because I, I want, in other words, it will force the hand of, he has to deal with this problem.
I think that's okay. I, I guess for me, I would just ask to define clearly what the growing season is because he's talking about his automatics and, you know, his 60-day plants and then if it's outside versus in the greenhouse.
Year 2021.
Yeah.
It ends sunset, you know, ending of December 31st, 2021.
Yeah.
And then, does, do we have proposed language from him on how he wants to amend it?
We do.
Is that in the?
It's in, it's in the Google Drive somewhere. It's in one of the previous meetings.
Is it just like one sentence or?
Yeah, it's very, very minor changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's just affecting wet versus dry and weight?
Correct.
I, I haven't understood fully what, I mean, I've been on this opinion since it was first brought up. Why is council so, it feels like they're, they really don't want us to, to do that. Why do you think?
They didn't want to go by weight, which would have to be reported and you get the number that's, the number that's reported to be there. She wanted to have something that was much more reliable with revenue, for example. Something that you can ask her to report and you can audit.
I mean, we're still gonna get that, it's just, it's, so what are we doing anyway? We're amending it, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to, he's gonna pay us a different amount for wet stuff. So we have some more stuff to get through here, right?
I'm assuming he's gonna give us a much smaller.
Correct, but that doesn't seem to be on the table of how much at this point, unless he submitted that. Did he say how much he proposed to give us?
He's made utterance who said it would be $100,000.
Like lump sum, whoa, 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 yeah, who knows?
Well, depends on how much he grows.
I know, that's what I mean, like, we have an amount per pound.
Don't we have, right, don't we have a percentage per pound?
For, for the dry stuff? Not dry, for any, but right now, he didn't think he was ever gonna have frozen stuff. So now that's the point, is that we only have one unit price, we need another unit price.
Right.
I'd be happy to meet with him and work out all the details and then bring it to the board and have you consider it.
Yeah, if you could just tell him we're, we're really not, you know, too keen on it during your negotiation so that, you know, he doesn't drive that unit price too far down.
Well, he said it was basically a 20-80 ratio. So it's.
Right, I remembered five times, four, five times, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah, 20%.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, if you can get back to us on that.
I'll be there with him and I'll, I'll bring it back to the board.
Sounds good. I know he wants to deal with it. I mean, he's at his own risk right now. Sounds good. I know he wants to deal with it. I mean, he's at his own risk right now, uh, because he's got an agreement with us.
Yeah.
And he's moving forward with what he's doing, as you heard tonight with, with this grow, and, um, at this point, he's got a.
If we change nothing, he's gonna have to pay a lot as soon as he moves that product out, a lot.
Okay. All right, any further on this? No, okay. Moving on, uh, the Town Administrator Report. David, um, we will defer to you on this. I'm assuming we've probably talked about a few of these things, but please feel free to take us through it as you wish.
So it, uh, there was a state of emergency, and we talked a little bit about the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act money. Those numbers there are confirmed official numbers. This, uh, the rest of the report goes through the, uh, of, of, the uses that that money can be applied to. Talks about the liability, uh, so I think we've covered all of that.
Yep.
Center School Roof Replacement Project tomorrow morning, they start mobilizing.
Nice.
We've got a project that's going forward.
Excellent.
We're gonna be having weekly construction meetings, and that's on Wednesday.
Thursdays.
It's a Thursday.
They used to be Fridays, now they're Thursdays.
So nine o'clock in the morning on Thursdays, um, face-to-face meetings.
So there are, just so we all know, and again, the Town of Hubbardston never, literally, votes for deck excursions for this amount of money to do something like this, and for it to go through last town meeting and go ahead with a, you know, a million and a half round number for, for this project is, is huge, but just from a checks and balances standpoint. So, we pay 40%, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA pays the 60% for this. So at the, our most recent project meeting, the MSBA has a consultant that works directly for them that basically spent the entire meeting we were at showing pictures of what not to do to the contractor. Like, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this, this is what we've seen in the past. So they're, they're like a quality assurance, quality control that come in whenever they want to, to check on the MSBA's money, right? So they're there on, and then we also have an architect and an owners' project manager that, again, we're paying portions of, 40% of this, who are administering the specifications, who are going through submittals and approving things that are, that are onsite full-time while the work's happening. So the checks and balances and, and all that sort of stuff coming from the MSBA, their consultant, and then our representatives is, is, uh, pretty legitimate and comprehensive, so, anyway.
And if there's a conflict, how does it get resolved?
If there's a conflict in, um, that's relative to, you know, products or, uh, the execution of the work or whether or not there is, um, a question on whether or not something is to specification, it, it, it is determined by the project team, which is the specific project team, which is the owner's project manager and the architect who's working essentially on behalf of us. And then that is brought to the attention of the consultant working for the MSBA, and they come out for an inspection to either determine that they agree with us and then make the contractor change it, or that they say, no, you're wrong, and, and things can carry on. So it's got a pretty formal process.
Okay. And these meetings are every Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM? Who attends those?
Every Thursday morning, so, um.
Do you attend those?
Yeah, and I do too.
You attend them?
I haven't yet because they've been Friday on, like, Zoom calls, it's been easy, so I'm gonna try Thursday mornings, but anyone's welcome to go anytime. And the other people who attended are, um, so far for all of these meetings, um, the superintendent, Sheila Muir, the, um, finance director, uh, Shell Dubal, um, facilities people, uh, Kevin something, who's new for Claire and the Quavon District. So there, there's been extremely active representation of, of the town and the district in all of these meetings. And then you've got the owner's project manager, the architect, and the contractor. Their project manager and superintendent come as well, so it's, there's a lot of people there.
Little party just rolling around.
It really is. Okay.
All right, so Senator Goby has filed special legislation to allow the Commonwealth to grant the Town of Hubbardston certain easements associated with future repairs to the bridge over Basin Brook. And that bill is now proceeding through the Senate, so.
So you just jumped down, where'd you go? You went to the bottom, Evergreen?
Went down to the bottom.
So Evergreen Road Bridge, uh, took a lot of common, the grant certain easements associated with future. I don't think I understand that, do you?
Yeah, so you have a bridge that, um, needs to conform to, uh, Bass Highway standard.
The one we're fixing now?
Uh, no, this is future.
Evergreen Road Bridge? Isn't that the one we're fixing now?
To my knowledge, yeah.
I just, I don't know if this is the, that might not be the correct heading for that.
Okay.
I, I would just check that. So I know, I, I know what you're getting, but Evergreen Road's the one that we're working on for about a year and a half now.
Because that's not a brook, that's, it goes over friggin' pond.
Yeah, right.
All right, I'll have that information correct.
Okay, why don't you bring that back to us with a, with the, to make sure that we understand it?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Talked about the playground, um, departmental functions, your revenues look really good. You're 11 months into the year, your revenues are 101% of the target. So everything that we bring in in June is going to be converted into free cash.
Yep.
All other things being equal. Your expenditures are below your expectation, you're at 85%, 88.5% actual, and we should be at 92%, so that's a good thing, and that's about it.
Yeah, great. I mean, this is, you know, what I was talking about, about the whole, um, we were scared thing was, was Ryan putting together some very conservative revenue projections, and as similarly, you know, we don't know what we're gonna be spending, so, uh, for it to sort of look like this, you know, at this point is, is great, uh, but it also just sort of furthers my, we didn't get as, um, uh, sort of slammed by this as we thought. Pandemic-wise, so, anyway.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
David, on the police vehicle camera project, do you happen to know which grant the police department got for that?
No, that was before my time.
Okay. The IT upgrade, the Community Compact IT program, do you know how much that grant was for?
Uh, again, that was before my time, so I don't have that.
Well, see, I might ask one more. How about the human resource upgrade? Do you know how much it was for or which company or consultant we might have hired?
That was for six grand.
Six grand? And did we hire someone for that?
Yes. So that project is coming to, uh, to an end.
Do you remember who we hired?
Um, Claire. Somebody Claire.
Okay, just an individual and not someone who's been around and, uh?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Cell Tower?
Cell Tower, David, you were gonna ask me.
Yeah, uh-huh, because I haven't been in for a week, I've been busy, so.
So I, uh, every, every couple of days, I email our friend in Redwood and say, Barry, we've got a response this morning saying that the RFP is still being worked on, and some people are on vacation, and so we're not gonna see any movement on that until July 1st. So, July 1st, I'll call up the Town Administrator and say, you're the Chief Procurement Officer. Where are we with this, this RFP?
Seriously. Just, I'm so tired.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's, it's just stayed the same for a long time.
Yeah, nothing.
Right.
It's, they've been going out to, you know.
I understand that this is a project that's been sort of kicking around for about five years, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, and still, and.
And they already own the tower.
Yeah, they told me, I nailed them down last time they were here, it was via Zoom, and they said March. March, that we'd see a tower. Not necessarily a cell, like, not a, not the cell, but the tower would be being built by March, it would be up.
Did they say which year?
Yeah, seriously.
Well, I thought one for, uh, Hadley, and it took me with all the paperwork, it took me three months to do it.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So, I think this is a life safety issue, I think I've said this before, and so I think, you know, it's my purpose in life right now is to make their own life unpleasant until they actually perform.
Well, let's invite them to the next meeting, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, because that was, like, I had more people in this past year complain about the lack of cell service, let alone it being an actual life sa- like, there's so many dead zones, God forbid, something happens to you and you're in that dead zone, you're screwed. There's nothing you can do about it, let alone our fire and police that go into houses, and there's no way for them to contact anyone. And then everyone else that, like, just the fair alone, I had so many vendors lost sales. Like, in-town people lost sales because, and I got booted out doing live feeds and everything else, and we're right in the center of town. And it just, this, you can't get a good enough cell signal to do business, it's not fair.
To be clear, to be clear, we're talking about the tower for emergency services only.
No.
Right now, right? We have no, we have no preconceived or pre-planned or plans existing that are gonna put cell service on that tower, do we?
Well, my understanding is that, um, that, uh, the dispatch, uh, apparatus will be, uh, put on the top of the tower.
Yeah.
Leaving space for self-service to be rented out, and people, private vendors would put, uh, cellphone apparatus up there on pay of, of rental, and that rental would go to the district.
But we have no vendors lined up that are willing to do that thus far, do we?
That's right.
We can't because we don't have a tower.
Okay, but they, they've been contacted, there's, there, it's not, it's not at zero. There's some level of, um, there's some level of, it's not gonna be too far after a tower goes up that these people come in. So it, it has been, you know, Ryan has worked on that part of it, we just can't literally do anything, obviously, so.
My, my experience is it'll be pounding on the door.
Okay, right, once the tower's up.
Yeah.
The tower that's already bought and lying down somewhere, um, somewhere else.
That, the pad hasn't even been poured yet.
Yeah, okay, um, thank you, David. Policies review, we don't have any, I think Ryan jammed those at us before we left. Um, and board and committee updates, I, I just, just the one, I have one from the Town Center Committee, so, I'd say for the last five years, it's been all good news. We've got some not great news recently, which, which is what it is, because we were bumped up a good year, year and a half, but I did get notification recently that instead of the notice in, for the Mass DOT going out next February, it got pushed to June. They have quarterly meetings and allocations and all that sort of stuff that is well beyond anything that we have any influence on, even though I did get cranky when I found out. But basically, we just got pushed to another advertisement date for the bid, so it's still next year, it's just a few months later than expected. And I, it's not like one of these things that just keeps snowballing and going away. So there is right-of-way stuff we have to deal with, it actually gives us a little bit more time to deal with some right-of-way stuff. If you recall, um, we allocated some monies during town meeting to pay for any right-of-way issues that we may have during this. So, anyway, just the, that was the, sort of, one, one item. I was, I was gonna have a meeting, actually, um, a couple of days ago, we were gonna have our Thursday quarterly Town Center Committee meeting, and I pushed it off just because this sort of happened, uh, we don't have much to talk about until we get a little bit further along, so, that, that's that. Anyone else have any more?
Yeah, no, I, I got nothing, nobody's with me.
Okay. Um, matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, we have a couple. David and I briefly spoke about them before the meeting, can you, can you, um, remind me what they were?
First one has to do with electrical inspections.
That's right.
The fees for that, this apparently is for routine work.
Okay, so this is, I'm just gonna read this because it's easier, this is from Mallory Seaman, um, in the Inspection Office in Hubbardston. We have a permanent, good morning, we have a permanent application for the school for a blanket permit which is applied for every year. So for the school for a blanket electrical permit which is applied for every year. This allows for normal electrical maintenance activities, et cetera, without a permit being pulled each time work needs to be done. Okay, so clear? The electrical inspector will not accept the permit without a letter from the select Board of Selectmen, Select Board, saying the fees for town-owned buildings, including the school, are waived. He stated that a letter from the Town Administrator will not suffice. Is this something we can please add to the agenda to get signed? So, um, I, I guess, uh, the, the action would be here to, for a motion to, um, say that the fees would be waived, um, including the school for all town-owned buildings, um, for electrical fees.
I'd like to make a motion to waive all fees for the town buildings and the school.
Electrical fees.
Electrical fees for the town buildings and the school.
Who's doing the work and?
Doesn't matter.
It's still the inspector, it's just the fees.
All right, well, we have a motion on table, is there a second?
Um, can, I'd like to second it, but I'd like to add an amendment to it and just clarify for the fiscal year.
Okay, well, I think you can ask to see if she'd like to amend it first.
Yes, for the fiscal year, yes, I will amend that.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table?
Second.
It's seconded, uh, so we're in discussion. So, just to answer your question a little bit further, so this is for anybody, but basically, just if a contractor comes in and it's gonna be some publicly bid project or whatever it's gonna be on a town-owned building or the school, that they don't have to pay an electrical fee that a normal person would have to pay if they were doing something at their own house, which is pretty standard, um, that we don't.
The electrical fee is for what, a permit?
It is for, yeah, the, for, for, for grabbing a permit for a town-owned building. They're, they're customarily waived, I do a lot of projects in other municipalities, and where we're doing work on a town building or on a town, whatever it, it's for, is the town usually waives the fee because it's kind of like double paying.
Yep.
So.
That's fine.
Okay, so, uh, any further discussion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, okay, unanimous. And the second, David, uh, is relative to, so we've got a couple of, um, appointments.
Yep.
So the first would be for a truck driver, equipment operator slash laborer. This is Jake Hackola, and I'm just gonna read you this because it's easier. Mr. Jacob Hackola, as of June 21st, 2021, which is today, we're offering you the position of a truck driver, equipment operator, laborer for the Town of Hubbardston Department Works. You have demonstrated skills and experience in operating all, uh, all equipment at DPW. We believe your knowledge and skills will continue to increase as your career continues, and we are pleased to make you this offer for 18 month, months, which will be reevaluated as to the contract, Article 36.4, which would be part of the union agreement. So the, the DPW union agreement, sincerely, David Nixon, Acting Town Administrator, so, um.
Is he part-time going to full?
Yeah, so, let me explain this to us.
Um, he's going to, uh, he's full-time going from one classification to the next.
Okay.
So he was a mechanic beforehand, now he's truck driver laborer.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
What, what licenses does he have? Truck driver, does he have a CDL?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, and a hydraulic license as well.
Yep.
All right, I'd like to nominate Jacob Hackola to, all that stuff Dan said.
Sounds good, that works.
For a truck driver for the DPW, full-time.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes, okay, unanimous. And then we have Nick Beauregard, um, this is from Travis Brown, the DPW Director, and this is an employment agreement. He is offering a full-time position of truck driver laborer at the rate of nineteen dollars and sixty-eight, uh, sixty-eight cents per hour. This was effective, so this would be retroactive to June 16th, 2021.
Yep.
So, uh, by accepting this position, you agree to obtain the following licenses before the end of your six-month probationary, probationary period, which is a Class B CDL. Failure to obtain at least the Class B CDL interim meeting requirements found in Article 10.3 of the Agreement between the Teamsters Union Local Number 170 and the Town of Hubbardston dated July 1st, 2018 to July, to June 30th, 2021, which is coming up soon, may result in termination by signing this employment agreement. You have read and understand the above conditions for employment with the Hubbardston DPW. So the sheet I just read to you is there, um, and then the, the typical wage authorization form is, is the next sheet, so I'll just pass that around quick because no one's seen that yet.
This is a new hire, yeah?
This is a promotion from part-time to full-time.
Okay, part-time to full-time. Okay.
So again.
I'll make a motion to have Nick Beauregard, um, all that good stuff that Dan said for the DPW, with the, what was it? I can't even remember what we were doing, full-time position for the truck driver, laborer.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
That is correct.
Yes.
Based on that condition, that's.
That's in his, yeah.
That's in the.
Within the probationary period.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. Uh, that's all I have, is not reasonably anticipated, is anybody have, uh, at the table here have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, uh, public press, anybody have anything that they want to, uh, ask or, or bring up at this portion of the meeting? No? Okay. No? Okay. It is, uh, eight thirty-nine.
I would like to make a motion to be done with this meeting and go home.
Sounds good.
Second.
Seconded, uh, not debatable. Um, to, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes, that's unanimous. All right.
Yay.
Okay, all right, that was, uh-
That was fun.